Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. Today is Monday, May 13th, 2019. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll have our opening ceremony. And Mr. Turler, do you want to start now? Or, I don't know. Okay.
Presenting tonight's colors are members of the J.M. Robinson High School Air Force J.R. OTC, including Cadet Captain Jimena Diaz, Cadet Captain Sarah LaCivita, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Christina Wilson, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Gillian Walters, and Cadet Captain Ethan Bailey.
Pace. Forward.
Honoring America tonight with the singing of our National Anthem were members of the Hickory Ridge High School Legacy Singers, including Amelia Andrews, Bryson Battle, Ashley Bayer, Esha Batnagar, Abby Brewer, Sidney Kennedy, Kat Daniels, Sarah Edwards, Angelina Franzino, T.J. Hagler, Brooke Harris, Kendall Hepper, Emmanuel Levon, Ashley Leslie, Jonathan Long, Mikelie Massa, Taylor McDermuth, Shelby Moss, David Parker, Isaac Pendergraph, Lily Rowland, Jada Shears, Sean Swye, Callie Teague, Logan Tillie, Kyle Vogt, Adam Wilson, and Rachel Wilson. The Director of the Hickory Ridge Legacy Singers is Ms. Kirby Tredaway. Thank you.
Thank you. We had the pleasure of hearing this same Legacy Singers group perform at the Retirement Banquet a week or so ago, and they were quite impressive then as well, singing some popular tunes and show tunes. So Board Members, we have setting the agenda before us. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
I know that there was an email sent out earlier today, and I was just curious, how many cards did we get for speakers tonight? Did we get quite a few?
Let's see. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Oh, we just got...
Seven. Is one more?
Seven. I know that you had gotten the email early about reversing the hearing tonight, and I know the other Board Members had gotten it, but I didn't know if we'd gotten quite a few or not on that, reversing the report.
Yeah, and I replied with, we did discuss that at Agenda Setting, and I replied, talked to you directly, and replied to Mr. Schuman, the demander, and said, "This is very unusual that the Board has not received a report, and so I think it's going to take some time to analyze it and whatnot, and I don't know that the community will be able to really analyze it in a short period of time." And we have many things to think about, about funding stream and requesting, and what does it put off if we do it and whatnot. So I think it's going to take some time to plan, if it's a positive report, to plan around it, so.
I didn't know if any of the other Board Members had any concern with where it was placed or not. That's why I was just, didn't know if the other members had gotten any, had any response on that or not before we set the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Next, we'll move into recognitions, and this is a busy month, as May always is, nearing the end of the school year. So first, we'll welcome up Ms. Glenda Jones and Dr. Louder to present the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. And I would like to just say that Tim Vaughn could not be here with us tonight, but as always, we want to extend our thanks to him, to Hillbush Ford, for their continued support and generosity of this wonderful teacher recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for May is Mrs. Catherine Morrell. Mrs. Morrell, would you, your family, and any member of your school's administrative team who are here tonight, please come forward. Catherine Morrell is a 4th grade teacher at Weddington Hills Elementary School. She was nominated for this award by a student who wrote, "I would like to nominate my teacher for Teacher of the Month. She is always there to help me. Whether it's math equations or a social problem, she is always willing to help her students, and she makes me feel like she believes in me. I'm so glad she is my 4th grade teacher." Mrs. Morrell, thank you for helping your students and being there for them, but most importantly, thank you for making sure that they know how much you believe in them. Congratulations on your selection as the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for May. Please allow Dr. Louder to present you with your award, and then our Board Members would like to congratulate you along with your family by going through the line there and shaking hands right down through there. (Applause).
So last year, the Public School Forum of North Carolina launched the Beginning Teacher Leadership Network, otherwise known to us as BTLN, in Cabarrus County Schools. This initiative was aimed at retaining, supporting, and accelerating the development of CCS beginning teachers by providing them with strategic professional development opportunities for cross-cultural, I'm sorry, cross-curricular, and I'm sure there was some cross-cultural as well, cross-curricular collaboration and discussions around educational policy. As we continued our program this year, our cohort members learned about top educational policy issues in North Carolina. They heard from key decision-makers in educational policy at the local and the state level. They collaborated with CCS educational specialists and engaged with new instructional techniques to use in their classroom. Additionally, BTLN members took part in an education policy project in order to improve their understanding of policy as well as boost their advocacy skills. I'd like to first recognize Jessie Enlow, the BTLN Coordinator, for her dedication to this program. Jessie currently serves as our K-12 Instructional Specialist, and I'd like to recognize her and have her come forward. And we're going to recognize the ones that are here tonight, the participants, and Jessie has a certificate for them. So when I called your name, I want you to come forward. I want you to remain up front until all participants have been called, and then go through the line and shake hands with our Board Members. Not here tonight is Mercedes Thomas, and she is at AT Allen Elementary. Not here is Hannah Clark, Carley Fur Elementary. Present tonight, and would you come forward, please, Carrie Honeycutt, Carley Fur Elementary. Ryan McComber, Cox Mill High School. Not present is Anthony Antonucci from Hickory Ridge High School. Present, Lisa Palmer, Hickory Ridge High School. Not present is Lauren Antonucci at Pitt School Road Elementary. Present is Karen Newbauer from WM Urban Elementary. And not present is Lauren McKelvey from Wolf Meadow Elementary. Please join me in congratulating this group of teachers for their participation.[780.12][780.12](Applause). I would just say that policy is hard enough for those of us that have been around a number of years to understand, so for you beginning teachers to take this on and to express yourself with your voice about policy changes across the state is admirable, so thank you for that. Now if you'll go through and shake hands with our Board.
Glenda Jones again. Does she know the highway?
Yeah.
Come back in. Mary Beth Roth for the North Carolinians. Oh, here you are.[888.23][888.23](Laughter). Mrs. Jones will have the Teacher of the Year recognition next.
Thank you. I'm so sorry.
Catherine Highsmith, would you please come forward?
And if you have any of your administrative team here with you, would you join her at the front? Or family, come on up to the front. My apologies.[921.00][921.00](Laughter). Now, I know we've already recognized you at our Teacher of the Year or so, but we wanted to recognize you again tonight at the Board of Education. So Catherine Highsmith, Global Inquiry and Design Teacher at Weddington Hills Elementary School, was named Cabarrus County Schools Teacher of the Year in a ceremony Tuesday, April 9th, at Carolina's Medical Center Northeast in the Hammerick Theater. Highsmith began her teaching career with CCS in 2006 as an English teacher at Mount Pleasant High School, and in 2010, transitioned to teaching art. In 2017, Highsmith had the opportunity to combine her passions for teaching and global awareness into the Global Inquiry and Design Teacher at Weddington Hills. Highsmith was presented with the opportunity to develop her own curriculum for this course and infuse global awareness throughout her school. According to Principal Dolan, Highsmith has a natural ability to connect with students and make learning meaningful to them. Her lessons are well-planned, and she links prior learning to new curricular information. Highsmith implements varied strategies in order to reach the range of student abilities in her classroom. Her students, as well as her peers, confirm her exceptional qualities as a leader and motivator. Moreover, Highsmith has a natural ability to communicate well with others, and her global mission and vision is evident in all that she does, both personally and professionally. Her commitment to success is unmatched, and she is always willing to go above and beyond the call of duty. We would like to congratulate and welcome Catherine Highsmith, our 2019-2020 Cabarrus County Schools Teacher of the Year. Catherine will be serving as the teacher representative on the Cabarrus County Board of Education, beginning in July, when Kate Colber transitions off, for the 2019-20 school year. We'd also like to extend our gratitude to all of our sponsors for Teacher of the Year, and recognize our gold sponsors, which included AXA, CCEF, Greater Charlotte Automobile Dealers Association, Concord Mills Mall, Deja Vu Hair Salon, Great Wolf Lodge, the Miriam and Robert Hayes Charitable Trust, and Sea Life for making this great event possible. So again, congratulations, and please allow the Board to shake your hand.[1071.01][1071.01](Applause).
Going on to Agenda Item 4.04, the North Carolina Association for Middle Level Education, and Dr. Mary Beth Roth.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Louder. At this time, I'd like to ask Anna Blessington and her family to come forward. Mrs. Blessington was recognized at the North Carolina Middle Level Education Conference in March as being the 2019 Middle Level Administrator to Watch in North Carolina. This award is presented to individuals who have demonstrated outstanding performance in education. There are four areas that the participant, or the nominee, must demonstrate excellence in, and that is academic excellence, developmental responsiveness, social equity, and organizational structures and processes. This year, Mrs. Blessington was recognized for outstanding in all four of these areas, so we congratulate her tonight. So please join me in congratulating Mrs. Blessington for receiving the award.[1185.23][1185.23](Applause).
Ronnie Boone to come up for the Impact Through Education Awards.
Good evening. I'd like to invite the representatives from AXA Advisors who are here this evening, Mr. Leo Spardella, Mr. Adrian Caspar, and Mr. Ben Sloan to come forward too. If they're here. Yep. You guys.
How are you? How are you? Good. Thank you.
Tonight, we're going to be presenting our final Impact Through Education Awards for the 2018-2019 school year, and we'll be recognizing students and staff at WR Odell Elementary and Cox Mill High Schools. But before we begin those recognitions, I do want to say thank you to Mr. Sloan and Mr. Caspar, and to Mr. Spardella, who isn't here this evening, for their sponsorship of these awards this year. Thank you for allowing us to honor our outstanding students and staff members in our schools, and we just want you to know how much we appreciate your generosity and support. So let's give them a round of applause for that.[1319.01][1319.01](Applause). And I also want to say a word of thanks to our community partners, the Cabarrus Regional Chamber, and to Concord Trophy for their ongoing support of the Impact Awards Program. So now, on to tonight's awards. I'd like to invite the administrative team from WR Odell Elementary to come forward to stand with their students and staff. Our first honoree from WR Odell Elementary School this evening is Dominic Davis. Would Dominic and his family please come forward?
Dominic is a 5th grader at WR Odell Elementary School. He certainly made an impact on the lives of students and teachers at WR Odell. His love of learning is evident as soon as you meet him, and he was a part of the school's Battle of the Books Team, and he was also a member of both the Math Olympiad and Science Olympiad teams at school. He met all of those endeavors with his usual excitement toward learning. He worked with his Science Olympiad coach and team to design a bulletin board graphing the number of books donated by 5th grade students to an elementary school damaged in the hurricane that hit our coast in the fall. Every morning, he collected books from each of the nine classrooms on the hall, tabulated the total, which included 10 of his own, and added them to the graph. That graph served as motivation for the students to bring in more than 900 books. Dominic's compassionate nature can be seen time and again within the walls of WR Odell Elementary. He worked with AIG students to help collect money for water for South Sudan. He worked with 4th grade students to teach them about coding and instill confidence in their abilities. Dominic also used a class meeting to help teach others about empathy and how it feels to be treated poorly by others. In the classroom, Dominic is a helpful and kind role model for his classmates. He enjoys guiding and teaching students in cooperative group activities and demonstrates positive leadership qualities. His quiet, compassionate, and patient demeanor contribute to a positive vibe for the classroom environment. In his free time, he enjoys being active outside, enjoys reading, and is on a swim team. Thank you, Dominic, for making a positive impact on education at WR Odell Elementary School.[1489.30][1489.30](Applause).
Our next Odell Elementary honoree is Ava Shapiro. Would Ava and her family please come forward?
Ava is a 3rd grade student at WR Odell Elementary School. After her first week at Odell, it was clear to Ava's teachers that she had the positive and lasting, would have a positive and lasting impact on her school. She possesses many wonderful qualities, but her compassion, integrity, and advocacy truly show how deserving Ava is of this recognition. Ava's compassion for others is evident as she exercises patience and acceptance when working cooperatively with her peers, and when she approaches classmates who sit on the buddy bench during recess. Her integrity shines through her peer relationships, and she regularly chooses the right path over the easy one in the classroom. Ava's strong student voice and sense of advocacy are what stand out the most in the minds of her teachers. On a personal level, she never hesitates to advocate for herself if she needs more support in order to understand a concept. However, Ava also advocates for others if she sees something that she thinks is unjust, and she thrives when she has the opportunity to advocate for causes that she is passionate about. Over the course of her 3rd grade year, Ava has taken charge in her classroom and has been a leader throughout an environmental service learning project. Along with her classmates, Ava has reached out to the students in her school, her administrators, and even the Odell community in her efforts to advocate for the environment and to encourage everyone to live by the five Rs: refuse, reduce, reuse, repurpose, and recycle. For these reasons, Ava's teachers have no doubt that she will continue to make a positive impact on anyone she encounters throughout her school career and beyond. Congratulations on receiving this Impact Through Education Award.[1674.78][1674.78](Applause).
Our next Odell honoree is Amy Roberts. Would Mrs.
There is so much that can be said about Mrs. Amy Roberts. She serves as a school psychologist at WR Odell Elementary School. Mrs. Roberts is a leader in the school who wears many hats. Sometimes, she's not even sure which hat she's wearing. She's an integral member of the School Improvement Team, the CISP Team, the Exceptional Children's PLC, and the MTSS Leadership Team. Each of these teams represents the core components of how Odell functions as a school, which means that Mrs. Roberts is a huge part of the success that WR Odell Elementary enjoys. She's well-respected, she's a well-
She's well-respect, she's a well-respected, National Board-certified school psychologist. This past April, Mrs. Roberts presented a session at the National Association for School Psychologists Conference in Atlanta. School leaders and staff are proud that she shares her expertise and passion with her fellow school psychologists. Mrs. Roberts' participation and input are always sought out. She participates on a number of district committees that are helping the school district move forward in the areas of mental health, social and emotional learning, and MTSS. She is a trainer for multiple programs within the district and is often asked to pilot new initiatives. When she's not at WR Odell Elementary, she's missed. Her colleagues know that her talents and gifts reach beyond the school walls and benefit students throughout the district. For example, she is one of a few psychologists in the district that is trained to work with students who have sustained traumatic brain injuries. She works with these students to find the best ways to help them learn. Her professional accomplishments are many, but it's her character that Odell Elementary appreciates the most. Mrs. Roberts is most, is the most kind and generous, one of the most kind and generous people you'll ever meet. Staff and students around the building often seek her out because they know when they meet with her, she gives them her undivided attention, and she makes people feel appreciated and cared for. Mrs. Roberts exudes compassion, competence, and a genuine love for what she does each day at WR Odell Elementary. She makes a huge impact on the education, she makes a huge impact on the education of the staff and students at Odell. Congratulations.
And our final Odell Elementary Impact Award recipient is Mr. Patrick Conady. Would Mr. Conady and his family please come forward?
Mr. Patrick Conady is the head custodian at WR Odell Elementary. Odell Elementary is truly blessed to have Mr. Patrick on staff. He treats the school facility like it's his family. He's very meticulous and thorough as he carries out his duties. Mr. Patrick came to WR Odell when the building, when the new building opened. Luckily for them, he came highly recommended from another elementary school in the district. Opening a new facility is not for the faint of heart, and Mr. Patrick worked tirelessly to help prepare the building. He is diligent and hardworking. He works efficiently even in times of great crowds and stress. Mr. Patrick attends most school events and ensures that the facility is shining and clean when hosting visitors. Compliments about how good the building looks are commonplace, and that's because of the hard work of the head custodian and his staff. Mr. Patrick is known for implementing custodial procedures and systems that help the facility to run smoothly. A point of pride is that Odell Elementary typically receives a 100% rating during its yearly evaluation. That's thanks to Mr. Patrick. There's never a need to rush around at the last minute or stress out about what the building looks like when an inspection is imminent. Mr. Patrick keeps the school in great shape at all times. Mr. Patrick has formed bonds with the students and teachers that he serves. He participates in the school's PBIS program, and he personally recognizes students and staff members who keep their classrooms and hallways clean with the Cleanliness Award. He also acts as a buddy or mentor to some of the students who struggle. You can see him around the school having conversations with kids and encouraging them to do their best. Mr. Patrick is also well-known in the school, in the school facilities community. He has a strong reputation for advocating for the school to get what it needs. He is an integral part of the school leadership team and the school's safety team. He, his input is very thoughtful and genuine as he works to do his part to make WR Odell Elementary the cleanest and safest school in Cabarrus County. Thank you, Mr. Patrick, for your impact on education in the WR Odell school community. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, we will move on to our Impact Through Education Awards for Cox Mill High School. I'd like to invite any members of the Cox Mill High School Administrative Team to come forward at this time. Our first honoree from Cox Mill High School this evening is Naomi Fountain. Would Naomi and her family please come forward?
Naomi is a fantastic student. She is such a positive person and one that seems to always have a smile on her face. She's a student who will impact many others throughout college and beyond. Naomi has served as a media assistant this semester. She completes all of her tasks without prompting and is always polite to staff and students. The expected duties of a media assistant include checking books out for students, checking books in, and filing them back on the shelves, creating displays and bulletin boards. Naomi has also assisted the media center coordinator with technology tasks as needed. She gets the job done promptly and returns to the media center. Because Naomi, Naomi is so careful and conscientious, she has been invited to assist with almost all the laminating for teachers. When she answers the phone in the media center, she always says, "How may I help you?" Her reliability and attention to details are refreshing. Naomi also assists with school tours for potential and new students. Her positive attitude and willingness to help others are apparent in all that she does. Mrs. Milliken states that she has worked with many students over the years, and Naomi is among the best. Congratulations on receiving this Impact Through Education Award.
Our next Cox Mill High School honoree is Brandon Giuseppe. Would Brandon and his family please come forward?
Brandon has distinguished himself as both an excellent student academically as well as a student leader among his peers. He is a member of Cox Mill's Academy of Information Technology. He has challenged himself every year with honors and advanced placement-level classes and has succeeded in those classes. Outside of his classes, Brandon has been recognized in several ways for his initiative and leadership. He has received the Cox Mill High School Citizenship Award in 2016 and has been inducted into the National Beta Club, National Honor Society, and National Technical Honor Society. Furthermore, Brandon has met all the requirements to graduate with a NAVTrAC certification through the AOIT program. Brandon is a leader on the AOIT Student Advisory Board, where he has served for over three years. Brandon organized the Code Red Valentine's Day Social and, more recently, this year's AOIT Open House for students of the class of 2023. In addition, Brandon has participated in numerous sponsored events, such as the Game Changer 5K and the Halloween Festival. Last summer, he participated as an intern of JM Robinson High School's fabrication laboratory. Brandon and his team designed and built 3D-printed devices for people with disabilities using computer-aided design, the engineering design process, and collaborative skills. Brandon was recognized as a top intern by Ms. Kristy Parlier, FabLab Coordinator, and the CCS faculty. Brandon has also served as a secretary of the Cox Mill High School Chinese Club. He was a co-founder of the Cox Mill High School Engineering Club and has volunteered his time as a technology assistant to the school's technology facilitator. Brandon is an exemplary student. His goal is to become an aerospace engineer, and he is fully dedicated to his ambition. Brandon is an active member of the National Society of Black Engineers, and we look forward to seeing how he will contribute to America's future. Congratulations.
Be careful of that cord right there. Be careful of the cord. Our next Cox Mill High School honoree is Mrs. Joan Milliken. Would Mrs. Milliken and her family please come forward?
Joan has a true passion for helping teachers and students around, around her achieve excellence. She holds a wealth of knowledge about instructional resources and texts. She truly wants to help students learn. Her attention to detail and thoroughness are second to none. Not only does she run the media center, but she also collaborates with teachers to design lessons, co-teaches, assist the school's instructional technology facilitator with instructional technology resources, and helps plan and deliver professional development opportunities for teachers at the school. Mrs. Milliken is a dedicated, passionate, proactive leader at Cox Mill High School. She is, she has devised a data collection system for the media center and uses that data to seek ways to improve the media center for both staff and students. Simply put, she works tirelessly to provide quality instructional support to all of the staff. Congratulations, Mrs. Milliken.
And our final honoree this evening from Cox Mill High School is Mrs. Pamela, Pamela Barnard. Would Mrs. Barnard and her family please come forward?
Mrs. Barnard has a great attitude every day. She works hard to keep things moving and organized with staff communication, substitute teachers, and lots of things in between. Mrs. Barnard is always looking for opportunities to improve processes at Cox Mill High School. She is a proactive problem solver and ultimate team player. She's always willing to take on a task and complete it at the highest level possible. The word "no" doesn't appear to be a part of her vocabulary when it comes to something needing to be accomplished. Mrs. Barnard impacts students daily via her work with the school's substitute teachers. She has created a streamlined, a streamlined and well-organized process. It is a difficult job, and she handles it well. Mrs. Barnard is also always willing to help with special projects whenever she has the time. Thank you, Mrs. Barnard, for all that you do at Cox Mill High School, and congratulations on this award.
And next, we'll go to Agenda Item 4.06 for Academic Honors, and welcome Mr. John Basileis.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. In a moment, we're going to introduce our academic and military recognitions. I have to say something first. You know, I'm in a lot of circles where I hear people bemoan the future and worry about what's next, what's, what's going to happen with our next generation. And for you all on the board and then in the audience, when you hear people saying that, I want you to think about the people you're going to meet tonight. The future is bright. We should all be optimistic about the young people we're going to meet and about the great accomplishments that they're about to have in their lives. So what I'd like to say to you is that each of the students you'll meet tonight has received recognition for their outstanding work. There is no doubt the school counselors who referred them gave us their names with a great sense of pride for these young men and women. These young people that will, that are with us tonight are in the launching stage of their life, and they have great futures ahead. In the song "Closing Time," the band Semisonic reminds us that every new beginning comes from some, some other beginning's end. Yeah. So as we approach the end of the beginning of their story, please join me in recognizing them. I'm going to start with a single recognition for Lance Kegel. Lance is going to be joining the United States Naval Academy. So Lance has a Service Academy recognition. Lance also received a scholarship to attend the U.S. Naval Academy, Academy. He will also has a United States Military Academy at West Point and the Coast Guard Academy, but is accepting the U.S. Naval Academy appointment. So congratulations, Lance. I didn't think I could wait out the applause. Lance, would you step to the side a little bit? What I want to do is invite your peers to come in as well. So now, we're going to invite our outstanding scholarship recognitions as well. Come on in, guys. So I'm going to call these young people's names one by one. I'm going to say a little bit of something about their scholarship award, and, and then we'll ask them to step back and get an opportunity for a picture. So first, I would like to recognize Jacob Rush. Jacob received the Citadel Scholars Program Scholarship, and this award covers all tuition and fees for attending the Citadel Military College of South Carolina. Congratulations. Next, next, we have Samelia Weatherspoon, who is going to be attending UNC Chapel Hill. Next, we have Samelia Weatherspoon, who is going to be attending UNC Chapel Hill. Samelia received the Carolina Covenant Scholarship Award for a full-ride scholarship through grants, work studies, and other means to cover all tuition and fees. Congratulations. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Jacob and Samelia are both from Northwest Cabarrus High School. Our next honorees are Addison Beer, who, as the shirt indicates, will be attending Yale University. Addison received the National College Match Scholarship, which provides him with full tuition at Yale University. Thank you. Also with us tonight is Alejandro Mejia. Alejandro will be attending New York University, and where he received the Steinhardt Scholarship, which is a full-ride scholarship, which covers all tuition and fees for all NYU students. Congratulations. Alejandro and Addison are both students at Early College High School. Our next recognition is for Alexa Smith. Alexa will be attending North Carolina A&amp;T University, where she received the Cheetah White Scholarship. This scholarship is a fully-funded four-year scholarship that covers the full cost of tuition, student fees, housing, meals, textbooks, a laptop, and supplies, and other personal expenses. In addition, the scholarship provides four summer of enrichment and networking opportunities for Alexa. And I must say that Alexa is representing Concord High School tonight. Next, please welcome McKenna McGee. McKenna will also be attending UNC Chapel Hill, and McKenna received the prestigious Moorhead Kane Scholarship. The Moorhead Kane Scholarship covers all expenses for four years of undergraduate study at UNC Chapel Hill. It also features a distinctive program of summer enrichment experiences designed to support students as they learn and grow. Congratulations. And McKenna is representing Cox Mill High School. Also with us tonight is Thomas Baker. Thomas Baker will be attending Davidson College, where he received the William Holt Terry Scholarship, which is a full-ride scholarship that includes tuition and fees. Awardees must demonstrate leadership in student government, athletics, service, and other activities. Thomas is representing Central Cabarrus High School. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, before I dismiss these amazing young people, there are some folks who were not able to be with us tonight. I just want to call their names out for a quick minute. Mark Anthony Hill received scholarships to MIT and Dartmouth. Jada Wagner and Aiden Hayes received the Carolina Covenant Scholarship, also from Early College. We also, not with us tonight, was Hannah Carmen, who received the Levine, Belkin, McNair Scholarships from Central. Also, I want to recognize a few military appointments who were not able to be with us this evening. We had some graduates from last year who received scholarships to attend preparatory academies. George Ritchie and Hannah Barber, who are going to service academies in the summer and in the fall. Congratulations, young people.
We'll welcome Mr. Basileis back for the school's science and math selections.
Thank you, board members. It is another great honor to introduce you to this wonderful, small group of young people tonight. These young people will be attending the North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics. As some of you may know, the North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics is a two-year public residential school located in Durham, North Carolina. It focuses on intensive study of science, math, and technology. This is a very prestigious school and accepts rising juniors from across North Carolina and enrolls them through their senior year. This is a public school, and it acts like a mini-university of sorts. And it's known that that school accepts the best of the best in science and math. So we want to congratulate all of these young people. First, I'd like to recognize Michael Steele. Michael is from Northwest Cabarrus High School. Lorelei Linckle, also from Northwest Cabarrus High School. Jonathan Jacob, from Concord High School. And Hannah Warlick, from Concord High School as well. Unable to be with us tonight were Zach Brown and Emily Lynn. Ladies and gentlemen, please congratulate these people on these outstanding achievements.
We'll continue on with our recognitions for some current students, cybersecurity video contest winners.
Good evening. We are going to recognize the cybersecurity video contest winners. I have Dr. Patty Wilkins from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, who is going to tell you a little bit about this recognition and introduce our students this evening.
Well, thank you for having me. So this is a collaborative effort that we do with the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. We applied for a $300,000 NSF grant, National Science Foundation grant. And so in that grant, we were able to hire a former student, Elliot Brooks, to create five online modules on cyber citizens. He did one on cyberbullying, digital footprint, digital identity, digital privacy, and digital etiquette. So Elliot Brooks did that part of the grant. And what we did is I came to Mount Pleasant Middle School, and I helped all sixth graders at that school go through those. They actually did three of the five modules. In addition, previous to the fall, we had several teachers in Cabarrus County and media specialists in Cabarrus County participate in a free graduate-level course at UNC Charlotte that was delivered totally online. Those teachers were able to go to their schools and deliver instruction to their teachers because the goal of our grant was to increase cyber citizenship knowledge and skills among middle school students, teachers, and parents. And so the teachers did the training with the faculty members. I worked with the middle school students. And then after we did the middle school project, we allowed the students in Mount Pleasant Middle School only to enter this contest. They had to, of course, do three of the five modules. And when we did that, we only had a small group of students actually participate at that point. So we brought in Darnett, and we then reached out to all of Cabarrus County middle schools. And so these students that you see before you have done an outstanding job on their videos. We're very proud of them. I would like to go ahead and announce the name of the students and the name of the video that they created. Please know that the tech facilitators at their schools have placed their videos on their school's websites. And I want to do a shout-out to the technology facilitators at Mount Pleasant Middle School, Jen Halsheiser, Kevin Lipp from CC Griffin, and Kim Harris from J&amp;Freeze. Kim actually had a first, second, and third-place winner from that school, so they really did a great job. So first up is Noah. And Noah, if you'll just step forward. And his video was entitled "Your Digital Footprint." So you can see his video on his school's website. Then from J&amp;Freeze, we have one of J&amp;Freeze's students. I recognize his face, but not... So let me go ahead and say, first place was Jack Fowler, and he did cyber safety during video games. Matthew George is here with us tonight. And Matthew did a video on stay safe when playing games, which is very important. And then, she's not here today. Let me go. I've got it phonetically here. Sasara Caniney. I'm sorry if I butchered her name. Third place, Five Easy Ways to Make a Good Password. And then, second place, we have with us Caitlin from CC Griffin, The Things You Need to Know About the Internet. So please give these students a round of applause, and please be sure to check out the videos. While they're shaking your hands, I'm going to go ahead and say, third-place winners won an Amazon Echo. Second-place winners won a smartwatch. And the first-place winners won an iPad. So they won very big prizes, and we hope to have some more of the faculty members in the summer class this summer. So thanks for having me.
And being an IT person working in the security space, hearing that the students were doing those videos in that competition was very important to me. And next, we'll move on to the fine arts recognition, and welcome back Mr. Bart Turwood. Yeah, you can stand up here. Yeah, Ronnie, help him.
Each year, the Cabarrus Art Guilds presents their Bloming Young Artist Awards to one student from each elementary grade level within Cabarrus County schools. The awards are in conjunction with the Nationwide Youth Art Month Initiative. The 2019 Cabarrus Art Guild Bloming Young Artist Award winners are as follows. Anna Tate, second grade from Beverly Hills Elementary, and Linda Song, third grade from Harrisburg Elementary. Congratulations to these artists. Unable to join us tonight were Jose Lopez Garcia from Bethel, Jacob Carlosio from Odell, and Erica Baum from Cox Mill Elementary, and Nikash Perasuh from Cox Mill Elementary. Thank you.
Do you want to bring in all of them?
I can.
All of the, just the art ones, and then you can do the choral ones after?
Sure.
And then we can shake hands all in a row?
All right. Cool. Kara. Next, we have our Cabarrus Arts Council Artistic Excellence Award. Each year, the Cabarrus Arts Council presents the Artistic Excellence Award to one student from each grade level within Cabarrus County schools. The awards are in conjunction with the Nationwide Youth Art Month Initiative. The 2019 Cabarrus Arts Council Artistic Excellence Award winner is Ms. Kara Hunkeley from Northwest Cabarrus High School. Congratulations to this artist. Next, we have our Cabarrus County Schools Grade Level Excellence Award. Each year, Cabarrus County Schools' level directors present the Grade Level Excellence Awards to one student from each school level within the district. The awards are in conjunction with the Nationwide Youth Art Month Initiative. The 2019 Cabarrus County School Grade Level Excellence Award winner is as follows. Tiana Elusi from Mount Pleasant Middle School. Congratulations. And now, we have our Superintendent Choice Award. Each year, Dr. Chris Lauder presents the Superintendent's Choice Award to one student from each school level within the district. The Superintendent's Choice pieces are displayed permanently here in the Cabarrus County Schools' Education Center. These awards are in conjunction with the Nationwide Youth Art Month Initiative. The 2019 Cabarrus County Schools Superintendent Choice Award winner for middle school is Ms. Jessica Fan from Hickory Ridge Middle School. Congratulations. Unable to join us tonight for the Superintendent's Choice Awards were Bridget Butler from Royal Oaks and Amber Colan from Concord High School. Additionally, since 1923, the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers have recognized works by teen artists and authors from across the nation. Nearly 340,000 works are submitted annually for consideration for their top prize. This year, Amber Colan's canvas entitled "17" was chosen as a winner for the 2019 National Gold Medal Award. She will be recognized this June in Carnegie Hall in New York City. Unfortunately, Amber was unable to join us tonight, but regardless, congratulations to Concord High School senior Amber Colan. Congratulations again to our visual artists. The Advanced Theater Class from Northwest Cabarrus High School was recognized for their performance of Andy Rassler's play, "The Queen's Servants," at the North Carolina Theater Conference with a superior rating at the regional festival, followed by a superior rating at the state festival, firmly establishing Northwest Cabarrus Theater Ensemble as one of the top theater troupes in North Carolina. Congratulations to Ms. Andy Rassler and her students for performance excellence. Okay, now we have the J&amp;Freeze Middle School Chorus. The J&amp;Freeze Middle School's sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade choirs were all recently awarded superior ratings in performance at the 2019 Middle School Choral Music Performance Assessment Concert in Wenge, North Carolina. MPA is often likened to an end-of-course test for chorus, as it is the only state-sanctioned event that provides a summative, standards-based assessment designed to measure student performance as it relates to the goals within the standard course of study. In addition to Freeze's MPA success, Hans Kegel, Genesis Gomez, Mirabel Capelli, Hannah Kim, Bennett Leader, Sidney Malden, and Sawyer Moret. Sidney Malden, and Sawyer Moretz were all selected to perform with the North Carolina All-State Middle School Chorus. Congratulations to the J&amp;Freeze Middle School Chorus Program and their director, Mr. DJ Godinez. Cox Mill Choir. Next, we have the Cox Mill Chamber Choir. The Cox Mill Chamber Choir was recently awarded a superior rating in performance and site rating at the 2019 High School Choral Music Performance Assessment Concert in Wingate, North Carolina. MPA is often likened to an end-of-course test for chorus as it is the only state-sanctioned event that provides a summative standards-based assessment as based on the standard course of study. In addition to Cox Mill's MPA success, Allison McGee was one of 300 high school students selected for the annual Mars Hill University Festival Chorus. Congratulations to the Cox Mill Choral Program and their director, Mrs. Jennifer Cook. Now, we have the JM Robinson High School Chamber Choir. The JM Robinson High School Chamber Choir was recently awarded a superior rating in performance and site rating at the 2019 High School Music Performance Assessment Concert in Charlotte, North Carolina, in grade six literature. MPA is often likened to an end-of-course test for chorus as it is the only state-sanctioned event that provides a standards-based assessment based on the standard course of study. In addition to Robinson's MPA success, Kevin Quinn Albanius was selected for the North Carolina Honors Chorus and the 910 Honors Select Choir. Minju Pack, Brian Stotner, and Kevin Quinn Albanius were also selected for the annual Mars Hill University Festival Chorus. Congratulations to the JM Robinson High School Choral Program and their director, Mr. Joshua Settlemeyer. Next, we have the Central Cabarrus High School Choirs. All three choirs from Central Cabarrus High School were recently awarded superior ratings at their 2019 High School Choral Music Performance Adjudication, Music Performance Adjudication at Wingate University. The mixed chorus received a superior rating in grade three literature. The women's ensemble, a superior rating in grade four literature. And the chamber choir, a superior rating in grade five literature and site rating. MPA is likened to an end-of-course test for chorus and is the only state-sanctioned event that provides a summative standards-based assessment based on the standard course of study in North Carolina. In addition to the Central Cabarrus MPA success, Jared Jenkins and Fernando Mesa were selected for the North Carolina Honors Chorus. Emma Ashley, Gustava Mesa, and Adelisa Malon were selected for the 910 Honors Select Choir. And Ruth Baugh, Jared Jenkins, Antonio Lathern, Fernando Mesa, and Zania Scott were selected for the annual Mars Hill University Festival Choir. Congratulations to the Central Cabarrus High School Choral Program and their director, Mr. Ethan Price. And next, we have the Hickory Ridge High School Choirs. All three choirs from Hickory Ridge High School recently received superior ratings in performance and site reading at the 2019 High School Choral Music Performance Assessment Concert in Wingate, North Carolina. The beginning choir received a superior rating in grade three literature. The advanced women's choir received a superior rating in grade five literature. And the legacy singers received a superior, superior rating in grade six literature. MPA is likened to an end-of-course test for chorus as it is the only state-sanctioned event based on the North Carolina standard course of study. In addition to Hickory Ridge's MPA success, Jonathan Long, David Parker, and Logan Tillie were selected for the North Carolina Honors Chorus. Claire Batson, Bryson Battle, Catherine Daniels, Ellie Filmancheck, Ally Leslie, David Parker, Logan Tillie, and Rachel Wilson were selected for the 910 All-County Select, All-Carolina Select Choir. And additionally, Sarah Edwards, Jonathan Long, Shelby Moss, Lillian Roland, Logan Tillie, Charity Williams, and Rachel Wilson were selected for the annual Mars Hill University Festival Chorus. Congratulations to the Hickory Ridge High School Choral Program and their director, Ms. Kirby Tredway. Next, we have the Harris Road Middle School Band. The Harris Road Middle School Advanced Band was recently awarded a superior rating in grade three literature at the 2019 Middle School Band Performance, Music Performance Assessment Concert in Wingate, North Carolina. MPA is likened to an end-of-course test for band as it is the only state-sanctioned event based on the North Carolina standard course of study. In addition to Harris Road's MPA success, seventh grader John Park auditioned and was selected as a member of the 2019 North Carolina All-State Middle School Band. Congratulations to the Harris Road Middle School Band Program and their director, Mrs. Leah Pfeifer. Next, we have the Central Cabarrus High School Band. The Central Cabarrus High School Symphonic Band was recently awarded a superior rating in grade five and grade six literature at the 2019 High School Band Music Performance Assessment Concert in Mooresville, North Carolina. MPA is often likened to an end-of-course test for band as it is the only state-sanctioned event based on the North Carolina standard course of study. Congratulations to the Central Cabarrus High School Band Program and their director, Mr. Tyler Stark. Next, we have the JM Robinson High School Band. The JM Robinson High School Symphonic Band was recently awarded a superior rating in grade six literature at the 2019 High School Music, High School Band Music Performance Assessment Concert in Mooresville, North Carolina. Furthermore, the JM Robinson High School Band was awarded a superior rating at the 2019 North Carolina Jazz Band MPA in Hickory this past Friday. MPA is often likened to an end-of-course test in band as it is the only state-sanctioned event based on the North Carolina standard course of study. In addition to Robinson's MPA success, sophomore Gavin Ashbaugh auditioned and was selected as one of six tuba players for the 2019 North Carolina All-State Ninth and Tenth Grade Band. Also, junior Brian Wilson auditioned and was selected to perform as the pianist for the North Carolina All-State Jazz Band. As North Carolina All-State Jazz Band only has one pianist per year, it is safe to say that Brian is currently the number-one high school jazz piano player in the state of North Carolina. Congratulations to the JM Robinson High School Band Program and their director, Mr. Drew Carter. And next, we have the Cox Mill High School Band. The Cox Mill High School Symphonic Band and Wind Ensemble was recently awarded a superior rating in grade six literature at the 2019 High School Band Music Performance Assessment Concert in Mooresville, North Carolina. MPA is likened to an end-of-course test for band as it is the only state-sanctioned event that provides a summative standards-based assessment based on the North Carolina standard course of study. In addition to Cox Mill's MPA success, Connor McGoon, Juliana Wang, and Sophie Smith auditioned and were selected to perform with the 2019 North Carolina All-State Band. Congratulations to Cox Mill High School's Band Program and their director, Mr. Adam Singer.
I would like to thank Deputy Alicia Troutman, the School Resource Officer at Hickory Ridge Middle School for being here with us tonight. Thank you. And board members, I have a request to take a brief recess. It is 7:22. We will start back up at 7:30. Thank you.